Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commending in the Tennessee School District 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a quorum for us, please?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Miss Hermes.
Present.
Steven Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll skip it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Moving on to a resolution of acknowledgements.
I've offered the following resolution and move for its adoption. Thank you to the class of 1979 and Tammy Johnson, the Middle School Advisory Council Fund, for their donations to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Miss Hermes.
Yes.
Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, we have Scott Kolberg first, our elementary principal for Adams and McKinley.
Good evening, everybody. Just real quick, when I'm done here visiting with you this evening, I want to just sneak out of here that there's an activity going on nearby that I have interest in, so just wanted to know. I'm wearing a button that I had made this summer. I had a bunch of these buttons made. I want to tell you about it a little bit. Of course, you know I'm a good business and town tag-up that can make anything we need. And my button says 95 percent, then it says "Ask Me" with an exclamation point, and then underneath it in smaller print, it says "Attendance Matters." And we're just trying everything, every little trick in the bag that we can this year to try to get the word out that attendance is very important and it matters even for five-year-olds and six and seven, eight-year-olds. Sometimes unfortunately we might hear, well, it's just kindergarten, or it's just first grade, but I think people who work in the buildings of McKinley and Adams would say, yeah, it's kindergarten and it's first grade and therefore it's so important and it might be the most important years. So we think it's very appropriate to have an expectation that a student attends school 19 out of 20 days, which is 95 percent. Our school year is 170 days. You take 10 percent of that, that's 17. Cut that in half, that's eight and a half. We think if a student misses eight and a half days or less, they're doing great things. Last year with our kindergarten group entering first grade, it was very common to see many students with 15, 20, 25, 30 absences, and we just can't keep down that track. So had a bunch of buttons made, starting to give them out to anybody that wants to wear them, and hopefully people that see our buttons will be curious and say, what's your button all about? Handing them out to our kindergarten teachers today, they're going to be meeting with all of their families on Tuesday, September 3rd, individual 15-minute meetings. I asked those teachers to wear them and start having the conversations now with our families. Just an update, if you can just, when you think of, I wonder how many sections or classrooms there are in grades K-1, 2, just remember 10, 9, 8. So we have all 10 sections of kindergarten at McKinley, of the nine sections of first grade, two are at McKinley, seven are at Adams, and then of the eight sections of second grade, six are at Adams and two are at Cleveland. In working with the bus company, you may or may not know, we've always had bus tags for our kindergarteners, but new this year, we're going to have bus tags made for our first graders as well. We think it's important for first graders to have some bus tags. Over the years, we've learned it's necessary. This year's bus tags for first grade will have different colors depending on what school they go to. They'll also include an animal on the tag so we know which bus to put those first graders on at the end of the day when they get to the bus transfer site here at Kennedy. Our second graders are going to have tags as well, but those are going to be much simpler. It's simply going to say "Second Grade," and it's going to be one color or the other. And if it's the one color, they go to Cleveland, and if it's the other, they go to Adams. It was fun today. We had some staff meetings at both elementary schools. It's always fun to welcome new staff. We have a couple new first grade teachers with us over at Adams School. We have a new kindergarten teacher at McKinley. We have a new music teacher at McKinley, a new music teacher at Adams. We have a school counselor, actually an employee at Lakeland full-time at McKinley that we're all very excited about. When we introduced her this morning, all the teachers at McKinley gave her, they clapped for her because we're just very excited to have a full-time. You know, I've used the term "school-based social worker" in the past. Abby Kopinski actually has her master's in school counseling, so she just talked with me today and said, you know, I'm okay if you just refer to me as the school counselor. So that's what we're going to do at McKinley School. Yeah, I think so many things I could visit with you about. Last thing maybe I'll mention to you is we're really making an effort at McKinley this year to do some things differently for breakfast, to get our kids through the lunch line faster, ultimately the goal to get them to class sooner. So I met this morning with Lance Wells, our food service director, also with Angie Erickson, who's our head cook at McKinley, and we came out with some suggestions that we shared with the McKinley staff. And I won't get into them in detail, but there's probably seven or eight things we're going to do a little bit differently. And we hope that we can serve our kids much more efficiently through the breakfast line, get them through. You know, last year at the start of the year, some of our kids were getting to class at 9:30, and by the time we got into the school year, on our best days, our last students were getting to the class at 8:45. School day starts at 8:25. We know that's probably not realistic, but on a really good day when the buses arrive at about 8:15, we think we could get those kids to class by 8:35. And that's what happens at Adams School. Of course, those first and second graders get through that breakfast line a lot faster, a little more efficiently than the kindergarteners. The other thing that happens at McKinley is because breakfast is free for all kindergartners, our breakfast numbers are kind of through the roof. And when they all arrive at the same time, there can be some log jams and when they don't know their lunch numbers and things like that. So we have all kinds of good things in place, and it was exciting to send an email out to all of McKinley staff outlining those changes and just looking forward to the efficiencies that we're going to bring to serving breakfast at McKinley. And with that, I would entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions for Scott?
Was the road construction done by Adams?
Yes.
I saw them tear it up a few days ago.
Yeah, there was some construction on Union.
Union, that's not, yeah.
That detoured us, but I don't know, that's all good now.
Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Katie Rodd, our elementary principal for Cleveland.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see, I received one of those attendance buttons, and that's what we communicated with our staff at Cleveland today too, is we really want to have some proactive conversations to really inform parents about the importance of their child attending school, and then when they are there, for whatever reason it is, they're truly missing out on learning opportunities and instruction that just can't be replicated in the same way. So we're going to continue that conversation as well with our second and fourth graders. I just wanted to highlight some summer happenings. There was a lot of action at Cleveland this summer. Otter Ventures took place over four weeks this summer as opposed to previous summers it was always three weeks. Each and every session was full of kids and lots of good learning and activities too that they might not otherwise be exposed to, took place during that close weeks. We had extended school year that ran on certain weeks and had overlap, and that too had very positive attendance. At the Prairie Wellness Learning Center, Biology Camp was offered for a week-long course. That's attended by students from all over the region. Other states come and it's filled up very, very quickly, so that's an initiative that they really are interested in continuing. Several teachers attended Compass to Nature Training, teaching in the outdoor classroom and some of the aspects of that. At the library, the summer reading program was up and running, and that too was well-attended, so kids were working on maintaining those reading skills over the summer. The Cleveland office has a new configuration. We've kind of scooted some of the furniture back a little bit just to open up the entryways so that it's more accommodating for parents stopping in and just general traffic through the office area, and it feels good. It feels like it's a little bit more roomy for everyone. The entrance is getting some enhancements done to it, some fortified glass, and there will be a buzz-in system, so a little bit more security added to the front entrance of Cleveland. An intercom system is being installed, the one that has been there, I think, is the original, and it's just time to update that. So that will be a lot of nice features with the new intercom system coming in. And then lastly, being schools within neighborhoods, we've talked time and again about drop-off and pickup and the safety aspects that we really need to be aware of. This summer, a section of the grass boulevard was taken out on the north side of Cleveland where we are encouraging parents to use that as a drop-off. So with the grass removed in the wintertime, the snow removal will be much more easy to maintain even. So we're encouraging parents, use that drop-off site, and if you just stay in your car and wait your turn, pull up to this newly poured cement. It's going to be safer, more efficient. Kids are not going to have to climb over a little snowbank to get to the sidewalk and into the building. So lots of nice happenings at the Cleveland building, so good things. At this, too, I just always like to recognize the work of our custodians in the fall of the year. They work throughout the summer and deep clean from ceiling to floor, inside and outside of the building, and do an outstanding job of getting our buildings ready to welcome students back to a new school year. And everything is looking good, so. Staff-wise, we are welcoming two sections of second grade to Cleveland. So the two teachers teaching those two second grade sections are Mr. John Daimuth, who's a veteran teacher in our Ferguson Falls district. He shifted over from Adams Elementary School to Cleveland. And then we're welcoming an Otter alumni, Ms. Caitlin Lillis will also be teaching second grade at Cleveland this year, so we are happy about welcoming her to our district teaching staff. And then in fourth grade, Mrs. Deb Streggy has remained connected and a teacher within the Prairie Science class the last couple of years. This year, she is shifting to be a fourth grade teacher, filling Mr. Jacob Calister's retirement, so she's excited about her new teaching assignment. Student enrollment, we are, each second, third, and fourth grade classrooms are all at between 24 and 26 students, so really nice-sized classroom each grade level. We have a total hovering right around 425 students at Cleveland right now. Also, each spring of the year, we send a letter home with fourth grade students, or third grade students, asking their Prairie Science class professors if they'd like to have their child attend the Prairie or attend a traditional classroom at Cleveland. And I like to remind the families of fourth graders, if they said yes, I would like my child to attend the Prairie, and they happen to not be in a Prairie section this year, they do have priority for attending Prairie Science class. The Prairie Science class program is a fifth grader, so we just need to balance all of the classrooms, and that's one aspect that we pay close attention to. And then also, shout-out to our outstanding tech department. With this being the year of the tech implementation, they have been in every nook and cranny across the district updating the technology in our classrooms. Lots of nice features, and they did a nice little video explaining to teachers how it all works, and so it's a good configuration, nice widescreens, bright projectors, and teachers are checking it all out right now, making sure that everything is, they know how to work everything and use it wisely. So great job with our outstanding tech department. They really are rather amazing. They have great patience and are very diligent with the work that they do, so thank you to them. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions for Tini? Thank you. Now, next report comes from Dean Monchier, secondary school principal.
Hey, good evening, everybody. When I was here over the course of the weekend working on schedules in anywhere from 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 through 12, I was remembering back to 1987 when I was a elementary FIED teacher back in Fairbowl. And I made mention to a couple of principals that I didn't really like or understand the schedules that they had put together for FIED, music, and media. So then what happened was, these gentlemen said, well, if you don't like it, do you think you can do better? So 32 years later now, I have not gotten rid of my scheduling hat. It was fun back then, and it still is fun now, to kind of work on the puzzle of putting all of these students into all the classes and trying to make the best matches possible that we can across those different classrooms, across those different grade levels. And I really enjoy the puzzle, but maybe not all weekend. But we do have, fifth and sixth grade letters went out, and so those parents and students have been informed of who their classroom teacher will be for this year. Seventh and eighth grade schedules were just turned over to the teachers as of today, this afternoon, so we've got those, you know, ninety-some percent all done. There'll be many changes, you know, between now and the first day of school. And our counselor office has been working diligently in relationship to those 9 through 12 high school students, just trying to make sure that everybody's got a full schedule come the first day of school. So we appreciate all of their efforts. Tini made mention in fifth grade of the Prairie Science class program, and I also mentioned this to our RightStart partners, they showed up for their orientation a week or so ago. This year, we had more requests for the Prairie Science class program for an additional year than we ever had in the past. Probably speaks loads to the quality of that program and the teachers involved in it. But I did tell those fifth grade parents at that point is that there's no possible way we'll meet all those requests, and we do get priority in relationship to the students that maybe didn't have a chance to participate in the program in fourth grade. So, but really, I also told those parents is that you absolutely can't go wrong in fifth grade. We have eight of the most talented and fantastic teachers at that level, so it will all be perfect in the end, I think. All of that is anticipation of getting ready for Back to School Night, happening on Wednesday of this week. We're going to start at 4 o'clock with our fifth graders and go on the hour. We never can quite get in sync, you know? Fourth grade, fifth grade, and then 5 o'clock, we go to sixth grade, but it's on the hour all the way through. Even last year was our first year embedding ninth graders and their parents in at 8 o'clock, and Jane Tilke goes through some helpful hints in relationship to ninth grade with that group as they come. So extremely important for all of our students and parents to show up here on Wednesday evening, starting on that scheduled 4 o'clock. The big carrot there for our seventh and eighth graders is they will get their schedule that evening if they show up for Back to School Night. So most of them show up at least to grab that one. Hiring status here at the secondary school, we probably had our calmest August temper. Literally, nobody quit. That is an extremely good thing in August, and we were able to hire for the majority of our positions last spring, early in the year. I see that you have on your agenda tonight here, filling our homework help position. That was the last position that we had to recruit and fill here. So we are totally ready to go as of day one here with the full hiring status. Special thanks, as the other principals mentioned, to our custodial staff in relationship to getting the buildings ready. We had, and we also, as a perfect example, we had Cooper's Office Supply was in here all weekend, putting new tables together, doing some teacher desk remodel for us. Those folks are fantastic. They're willing to come at any time, and they got their schedule going early here just to make sure that we're ready for school to start. So very much appreciate that group. And along with our technology staff as well, just fantastic in working with. I've mentioned this many times before, if Sue Lewis quits, I quit because she is absolutely essential in relationship to making that whole scheduling process work. She's just fantastic. But it was a little easier in relationship to synergy into our third year now. We've got a lot more of those little intricacies of that program worked out in relationship to scheduling, and we had some learning opportunities in relationship to the new online registration that we did with our new students, but it was nice to kind of go through that on a gradual basis over the course of the summer so we could learn some things, and I think we've got the bugs worked out there, and it's going to be a real good kind of process for us going forward. And lastly, very appreciative of a couple facility changes that have been made recently. Thanks to Mark Maston's efforts here, we've got some new doors, the B doors over by the Gold Gym as far as exit and entrance doors there. They're going to be fantastic when we get that fully operational. And then we've done some work in relationship to the sidewalk that runs from our fifth and sixth grade wing of the building out to the playground. And that whole drainage and everything has been really addressed here, and I think it's going to be just super for this coming year. So appreciative of those couple changes.
Any questions? Questions for Dean? Thank you, Dean. Our next report is from Mark Maston, our business manager. He's going to talk about the selfies.
I was going to talk about a few other things too, but principals have come up here and already said it many times. Thanks to the custodial crew, thanks to the tech department. Cleveland, Tini went through pretty much everything there on the facilities, so we'll just go building by building then and go from there. McKinley, basically the only thing we've been doing all summer is trying to find a nasty leak in one of the classrooms. The water's been coming in, we've replaced the window, we've done numerous things, and we're hoping that it resolves the problem. The room's been cold, and so we're hoping that with insulation and everything else that we finally get that done. You wouldn't believe how much effort went into that, so that's the only reason I bring it up. Adams, a lot of work was done at Adams. We got a new playground, a piece of equipment, a very large one. We didn't have quite so good an installation on the rubber matting though, so they're going to be coming back and doing some fixing on that. Inside of the building, we replaced the flooring in the lower level. We also replaced the flooring in the gymnasium. Both instances, oh, and we also had to remove some asbestos that we found in some pipes above a bathroom on there. So we had the asbestos people back twice because when we replaced the gym floor, we took off the tile and found out there was another set of tile underneath, and so we had, and of course that had asbestos in it. Trying to find an asbestos contractor in the summertime is not easy, but we did it. Over at Roosevelt, the roof repair on the old gym should be completed by now, if not very close. That was the biggest improvement we've done over there on the outside of the building. Inside the building, we've been working on some of the control systems and so forth within the facility, getting rid of some of the old electronics and getting more digital and so forth, make it more efficient and operate much better. Dean stole my thunder here over at Kennedy by the new door on door B and down below, but what he didn't mention was the pool pipes. And we got that all done, and a shout-out to Global Contracting on that one because first time I've ever had a contractor who just showed up, did their work, did it quickly, did it on time, didn't complain. They were just here, got the job done. Even had the inspector come in, and we were all ready to meet with the inspector, and they let him in the back door, showed him everything, and the inspector walked out. So we never even got to meet the inspector. It was just well-done project. So I'm not saying the pool is 100% complete because that pool, I don't know, it's just one of those things that just didn't, yeah, I think doesn't like me. But anyway, I think that's all the major projects. Like I said, the technology was also a great big one, where we replaced all of our interior hardware and so forth, so it's a lot of little things that you just, you don't see, you know, big visual. It's all just little tweaks that we did this year. I mean, I'm certainly happy to show you pool pipes, but I'm sure that's not how I realized. Any questions?
Do you know when the showers in the old gymnasium will be done?
No, I don't. And the reason for that is, if we touch those showers, it's going to be approximately, we had a cost on this, I think it was $1.6 million.
Really?
Really.
Wow.
And it's because we have to not only replace the pipes feeding to that system, but we have to adjust the locker rooms to meet the ADA requirements.
Okay.
And now we're moving walls and removing everything else. And you can't just do it one, you got to do it both.
Sure.
So it's suddenly, plumbing gets very expensive. So when will it be done? I don't know. Personally, I just don't think it's a project that's financially feasible for the amount that you said it is. Come January 1, you may have somebody else's. Any other questions?
Well, what would we use those locker rooms for?
Junior high football, gymnastics, maybe, I don't, I mean, there's not a lot of things going on there that would use them for, yeah. I was just curious, had a question.
The biggest problem, of course, like I said, is the ADA compliance and stuff. It's just not there, and it requires extensive work. I'm sure if we did, we might get a better price, who knows? But I'm not suggesting that we'll suddenly get down to $20,000 either, so.
Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you for coordinating all that.
They paid me to do that, too.
Jeff Drury.
Good evening.
Good job.
Good evening.
Keeping with the common refrain for the evening, many thanks go out to the people that work tirelessly behind the scenes often in order to get a successful school year off to a great start. Again, my thanks to the custodians for putting the wax on the floors and touching up the paint and all those things that go into showing the students that we appreciate them and staff with a nice, clean facility. To the tech department for all the upgrades that they diligently worked on over the course of the year. To Mark overseeing the work that was involved in Lane, who's a whirling dervish of activity with the hiring and keeping all the pieces in motion. To the admin team for their leadership and looking at plans for the year, whether it's having a more secure and accountable check-in at KSS, to looking at procedures to get the elementary students through the breakfast or lunch lines more efficiently. All of that work is greatly appreciated. And my thanks go out to everyone in the community that's been so warm and welcoming to me as well as to the staff that's been welcoming and helpful as I transitioned into my career here. With that said, a couple items I wanted to bring up. I had a really nice visit with Mike Clark out at Otter Health Coaches, and he introduced me to his staff. We talked about some of the changes, and Scott alluded to one of them with just the color coding with the first graders this year that they work on. Showed me their computer system that has all of our routes on there and how they can tell which direction the bus is traveling, each individual pickup site, who's riding on it. Really, really impressive technology. And then we toured the facility. It's obviously pride that goes into keeping the fleet in great shape and clean and all those things. There is a welcome breakfast for the drivers coming up Wednesday morning, I believe, out at the airport, and I'm double-booked a little bit, but I'm going to try to make at least part of that event and share my appreciation for the job that they do in transporting our students throughout the year. Carrie Thompson and I finalized details with Diane Hecox, who's our presenter on differentiated instruction. I just want to share with Diane, this is a I just want to share with Diane, this is at least the third phone call communication she's had with the district. Diane presents on a national platform and to have her come in to the district is really a great opportunity. But the fact that she's very, very interested in tailoring her presentation specifically to our district says a lot about her professionally and wanting us to get the most out of it that we can. After meeting with the administration, we decided that two-thirds of her presentation would focus on differentiated instruction across all spectrum of our student body and that one-third would be specifically tailored to that talent segment that we've talked about with our plans. So that's going forward tomorrow. She'll give about an hour general overview of differentiated instruction where all of our faculty will be present. And then we'll have breakout sessions, K through six and then seven through 12, one in the morning and then one in the afternoon. We also met this morning, Carrie Thompson and I, with the PLC leaders, the plan this year. We hope that it can follow as it's laid out, but pretty aggressive in terms of going through the differentiated instruction book, chapter by chapter, with opportunities for teachers to reflect on their own professional practice and instructional techniques, incorporate some of the skills and tactics and strategies that Diane will promote with us tomorrow. Talk professionally with their colleagues about what's working well, what needs to be tweaked. And it should be a very, very focused and effective PLC this year. We're really looking forward to it. And then today, today was my day to kind of be in the vehicle and drive around as I was able to with the building principals, welcome the faculties back at KSS, McKinley, Adams and Cleveland. So it was my first time kind of meeting all the teaching staff and everyone is excited and I think raring to go and should be a great rest of the week here in preparation for the start of our school year. One other, just kind of a heads up, there have been a few emails with some people struggling with the new online registration. Sue Lewis has been really diligent in communicating with people and walking them through step by step. Just excellent customer service. And as we continue to work with Region 1 on the process, this will just get smoother and smoother. But a few tweaks to do, but all is going well. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Any questions for Superintendent?
I don't know if this is something that you talked to Otter Hill Coaches about, the construction out here. Will the buses head down Randolph and kind of be clogging that up until it's finished over on Summit? Or will they head up spring?
Well, I think first of all, we received word from the city that they're going to make every effort to get it finished before the start of school. Now, whether, we'll determine that. But that was their intent, is to try to get that, at least that one road paved.
Possibly a couple, a week of backup maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just curious about that.
Any other questions for Superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
Say, Matt, can I go back up here and tell you about Target? I forgot about that.
Seen some activity over there.
Yeah, there's been some activity. Just to update everybody on the Target building. First of all, the reports have come back for the asbestos, the environmental and the structural of the building. And basically, they've all come back clean. Target did their work when they acquired the property to make sure all of this was done and they maintained it that way. The only concerns that they had on structural were the rooftop units that provide heating and ventilation and cooling to the building are getting old and they should be replaced. And of course, our project will not make use of those devices for the new building. We're going to build our own ventilation system within the building rather than upon top of the roof. We will have to make use of some of those units for the areas that haven't been developed, but it's such a large space that if one goes down, we'll just shutter it and let the other units pick up the slack until such time that the full facility has been created and built. The other piece was the parking lot, which we already knew that the parking lot needs to have an overlay on it, so we've already budgeted for that. So things were looking good. So with that, I initiated the second of the two $10,000 of our payments that need to be placed into escrow. I did that last Friday. And so we're at a point now where we are within 30 days of going through the closing process. That also initiated a discussion with our financial advisor to sell the bonds. So the next school board meeting on, I think it's September 16th, during that day, they will sell the bonds. And then that evening, we will have to approve them. And there'll be tons and tons of documents, resolutions and everything else that will have to be done. 10 days after that then, we will receive the proceeds from the bond sale. And then on the 27th, we close with Target. And then that building will become the property of the school district. I've also talked to the architect and given him the go-ahead to start continuing to do the design work and so forth. So we're on schedule for bidding construction sometime in November, December timeframe. And then also working with our legal team to try to get an agreement with Children's Corner developed. And they now, Children's Corner has that document in their hands and they're working with it. So I'm assuming on the 16th of September, we will have that as well. So everything is shaping up pretty well on that acquisition.
Are the bond rates akin to when we sold for the remodels out here?
Well, bonds are looking pretty good right now, bond ratings. I don't know if you've been watching the media, but bonds are kind of hot topic now and because of all kinds of economic uncertainty. Certainly, our project is attractive to bond investors. So I think on bond sale day, we'll do pretty well. Worst-case scenario, we would have the bond rating of the state of Minnesota because that's the way the state works. We can have better than their rating, but we can't have worse. So.
Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our general consent items. We have a minutes for the August 12th, 2019 school board meeting. Personnel, Elaine Jenkins.
Well, we have a few items under personnel, so just bear with me as we go through the listing here. Support staff hires, Haley Saugness, Student Services Coordinator here at Kennedy Secondary School. We have a couple cafeteria hires, actually three, Anna Rethwish here at Kennedy Secondary School, Jessica Ashnewitz.
Shneewitz.
Ashnewitz. Thank you. I didn't pronounce that right and I didn't even know that that was mispronounced, so thank you. Maya Hansen, she'll be over at Cleveland. And then Kristy Edman, she's just changing positions from Cleveland, switching over here to a little bit more hours and a different position as computer lunch at Kennedy Secondary School. Then we have some new hour supervisors, Marlene Johnson, Ashley Thompson, and then a special ed paraprofessional, Chanel Edenlaw. As far as support staff resignations, we have Tammy Bauer and Lana Hammer. Both are special ed pairs that ended at the end of last school year. We just received their resignations just right before this board meeting here, so that's why they're on now. Certified staff hire, Jennifer Carlson. Jennifer was our Student Service Coordinator last year. She has resigned and will be substituting in our school district and has taken a long-term substitute job to start the school year off. As far as certified staff overload contracts, Brad Strand, Jamie Lil and Michelle Danielson. All of those will be taking on extra load in order to carry on with fulfilling the requirements of our staff and our schedule and such, our student schedules and such. Administrator retirement with great sadness, I have Mark Mastin on the list here as our business manager after 37 years. I am in the grieving process, as many others are in our district. So it's going to be very tough on a lot of us to say goodbye to that well-versed gentleman over across the table there. And head coach resignation, Randy Hansen, head boys track coach. We have a couple different other items which also go under personnel. Memorandum agreement between the school district and Sherry Smith, payroll manager, due to comparable worth revision that we have discussed. And then last, agreement between the school district and Mark Mastin's business manager effective July 1st through 12/31/19, his last workday. And that's only because he currently is working with no contract because it hasn't been negotiated at this point. So we're just placing that in, putting that in place. So I recommend all those for approval to the school board.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? General consent items passed. There is no old business. Moving on to new business, we have additional Kennedy Secondary School noon hour hallway supervisor position at 2.25 hours a day, 170 student contact days, and a hire of Laura Braun?
Yeah, Laura Braun.
Okay, effective on 8/29 of this year. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, we have the naming of the old Target building to Lincoln School. Do we have a motion on that to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Would you like a history lesson?
Absolutely.
All right. So we have been naming our schools in Fergus Falls after deceased presidents since 1894. Up until that time, there was a school in each ward and so the schools were just school number one or ward one school. In 1894, they decided they were going to, they needed to build a new building and that they were going to need a high school. And so at that point, it was brought up that they were going to, they would like to name it after, it was going to be Washington, Lincoln, and then Harrison, I think was one of them. But anyway, that is how far back that tradition in our town goes, 1894.
Awesome. Thank you.
And thank you to Roger Rustad, who is one of our great volunteers, who's been compiling history of the schools and he, I happened to find that in a big scrapbook thing that he had put together for us.
Okay, cool. Any other discussion?
Thought you were going to trot.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three is we have a resolution on retirement of Mark Mastin. Whereas Mark Mastin began his employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1983, and whereas Mark has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 37 years. And whereas Mark has done an excellent job at our finance officer and business manager for the district, and now therefore being resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Mark Mastin for his 37 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Would somebody offer that resolution for its adoption?
I will offer that resolution for its adoption.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Does that assist that resolution come? We knew it was going to come someday.
Let's get soppy and sentimental.
We still have you for a while.
So we have time.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Yes, Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
That motion and resolution carries.
Thank you. And our four is we have a resolution on the designation of an identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system. And as the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, requires that the school district's annual designate an identified official with authority to comply with the MNIT enterprise identify and access management standard, which states that all users' access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and certified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authority, external users' access to MDE security system for the location education agency, LEA. The board recommends to authorize Jeff Drake to act as the identified official with authority, or Iowa, and Elaine Jenkins to act as the Iowa to add and remove names on the Fergus Falls Public School District 0544 dash 01. With that, would somebody offer that resolution move for its adoption?
All offer the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And any discussion on this?
So just leave it as it is. It's a lot of hoopla and in order to do what we just did in January, but there's a few, yeah, this is just one of those hoops that we have to follow through with Minnesota Department of Education in order to do what we need to do. So we'll comply.
Yes.
End of story.
Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
That resolution carries.
Thank you. And item number five is we have the FY '20 Early Childhood Service Contract with Lake Country Service Co-op. This is a revision to the one we had before. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Oh.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
There was about 350 hours of time added to you, which will add about $10,000 to the program. Program does have money. We've been banking on having a program started already at Heritage, the expansion was supposed to be taking place and so they do have the money for it.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this, we will go into a work session to talk about staffing and strategic planning. To sum up upcoming events, our Friday night is Friday, September 6th. It's from 5 to 7 right here at Kennedy Secondary School. Come and early and before the football game and during that time and also get the bet. It's $5 for, to support the 544 Foundation. And it's just a great event and it's got a lot of fun, so. And then our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, September 9th and 5:15 right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, do we, somebody want to give a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.